Back off. Charles is waiting.
Don't look at me.
All right, we're all here, okay. So Bobby, is there anything else you want to cover before we get into department-specific things?
I got a question, I got a question to ask you.
Okay, go ahead, Councilman Donnell.
I wrote down, I don't know if you said this enough, I want to make sure, did you say that there's, in this new budget, there's nothing in there for street paving?
Yes, sir, I did say that. So if you'll, if you'll look, just to be clear, because that has been a point of misunderstanding by everyone. The easiest place to look for that is, if you look at the ordinance itself, page, page nine, section four of the ordinance. These are the items that are proposed to be funded in this budget ordinance that's before you. All of these items have a funding source. The top box in this section are carryover items from this year's budget, for which there's fund balance being carried forward to pay for. The bottom three items are new items. They're grant transportation projects, which there's grant money to pay for. So, street paving, police cars, everything else that makes up that eighteen million dollars that's asked for, it's not in here. If you'll, I think you have this report before Councilman Donnell.
Uh huh, uh huh.
That's everything that's asked for, and it's only the ones that are highlighted in green that are included in this ordinance to be funded.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask Mr. Pilot to help with this, please? For Stan Pilot to come up and discuss about the road to that question. I need a little more clarification.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, can you clarify, the past couple of years, we've been working on a paving list, on roads that, one to four, scale of one to four. I couldn't find that list yesterday. But help us understand, right now, we see there's three million, but am I correct saying that that three million is not there for paving? Can you help me understand, since this is your specialty?
Now, that's a findings question. So right now, everything, what Bobby said earlier on our capital budget, has been taken out, it doesn't have a funding source.
Okay.
And so the grants, the road projects that we have funded for are the multimodal grants for North Parkway and the Airways Transportation Alternative Grants.
Okay.
And so then some Christmasville Restru- Rebuilding, X eight five, those are the grants that are funded. So those are the things right now that are in the capital budget or that have funding sources for them.
Okay, so if this work session is for me to understand better, I am, I am frustrated, to put it, that that's something that I've worked on for five years. Our infrastructure desperately needs to be looked at. And if we don't have the funding, I am not voting for this budget in any way. So if Bobby can answer those questions and tell me where the money's going to come from, then that's great. But at some point, I want to hear from Mr. Pilot, the engineer, and I want to address the streets that were supposed to be worked on, and some I have for five years. So that is my obligation, that is my duty, and that's why I wanted this work session, and I'll stop on that. Thank you.
I certainly defer to the Planning and Engineering Department on the specifics of the roads. But as I mentioned earlier today, and, you know, it's, 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 you know, in one sense of the word, it's unfortunate that there's not a clearer understanding of the last three or four years in the capital funding and how that's all worked. As I described earlier, there were a couple of years where there were state grants specific for paving and restructuring that helped us make those investments, which everybody agrees are needed, right? There was also unexpected sales tax revenues, much more than what we had expected there to be. And there were transfers to move that sales tax money from the general fund to the capital outlay fund for those types of investments. It's unfortunate now that, that unexpected sales tax revenue, that growth in sales tax revenue, that's no longer the situation, which is not true. It's true that in FY twenty-four of the year, we're completing now, sales tax revenues are basically going to end up probably at one percent or less, more than they were in FY twenty-three. And sales tax revenues for next year are projected to be flat to maybe up a half to one percent. So that's, that's the reason that there's no funding, additional funding in the capital budget, as it has been the last two or three years. And as I've tried to share with everyone, the way that most municipalities address capital needs is through a debt issue of some sort, where the expense can be amortized over the life of the asset. And, you know, if I'm, if I'm being asked for a recommendation on how to fund the capital budget, that would be what I would recommend, that once we get an adopted budget, the council should consider options for a debt issue to finesse capital assets that the city needs. And we would complete the debt issue, do a budget amendment, put those items back in the, in the budget. That's what would happen, so.
May we hear from Mr. Pilot now, please?
To answer your question or to try to provide some clarity, the process for determining the repaving list and all of that has not changed. The repaving list was, was determined for this time. It's, it was scheduled to not, not to occur until the new budget year, because there was not any money left in the current budget year to pursue that. So we did take bids on the resurfacing, and we received the, the bid that we're recommending is Delta, and it was for about three point six million. But again, that, that doesn't come before you until the new budget year. But right now, what Bobby's saying is while we have done the process like we, like we always do, then it comes, it becomes, you know, your responsibility to choose how you're going to fund that. And Bobby's basically explained the parameters around that. We do our part, we, we come up with the streets based on condition. We get an amount, we bid that out, we receive bids, but you have to award the bid. And to award a bid, you got to have some money to, to pay the contractor, so that's what he's saying.
So how much of that three point three million, what would that pay?
Well, right now, there, according, there is no money, zero.
That's what, okay.
How much money was the last year total spent on roads?
Four, six.
Yeah, there was, there was thirty-two years.
Roughly, roughly, okay. And where did that fund? Just come from the general fund?
You know, again, you know, some of that over the last two or three years was grant money from the state of Tennessee. Basically, the rest of it was unexpected sales ta- excess, sales tax revenues in excess of what we expected. And rather than that just sitting in the fund balance in the general fund, the city made the decision to invest that money in, in streets and roads. And it was transferred from the general fund to the capital outlet.
So there was no money in the budget for it, we just exceeded revenues and spent that money?
There's no money in the budget?
In the budget for the roads during those years. We just had extremely good revenue, so we used that revenue to cover a non-budgeted item.
Right.
Okay. And so we're doing the same thing here, only we're not going to get this windfall from Washington.
Are you any questions on that before we go forward?
Just so I understand here, so on page nine, pending capital projects. If we choose to eliminate any of those, we still can to save that money?
If we eliminate the pending, well, most of these are encumbered already and in place.
The T-Dot projects are already under contract, and so they're, they're ongoing projects, so they, they are already obligated, and so.
T-Dot, okay.
Yes, they're already obligated by contract.
Six hundred thousand, okay. Which ones are not obligated so far?
To, to, to the best of my knowledge, everything in the top box is encumbered and obligated.
Okay.
Now, the energy efficiency, there is a grant for that, so that's a hundred percent money. So the money that you see for energy efficiency conservation, we're using that money to, to fund the upgrading of streetlights in East Jackson, across East Jackson, because there's a lot of the older fixtures that don't provide the, enough light for the area. So, so that money is a hundred percent money. There's no local match, and it will pay completely for that.
The bike and pedestrian, which is one point one million, could we use that for roads? And then if we had a windfall, we could put the item back in. Now, road's more important than that.
I believe Bobby said that's carryover, so, from this year.
Yeah. It is carryover from this year, and my, well, go ahead.
I was going to say, or from that, where was it? The, the two point eight that we got from the Telft District, could you not put that towards repaving? We had to make an amendment, I suppose, but.
Yeah, that would be the two point twos.
Can I ask a question while y'all? I, I want just a flat answer from engineering or from Mr. Pilot. The roads that we asked for, that we've been towed, and the, the scale. Tell me how much, just one, the worst, I think that's one and two, how much would that be?
That was, I figured that out last week, and I think we got.
Six million, six, six point something.
I thought it was closer to nineteen.
It was, it was on the scale from one to three streets. And so the Pacer scale goes like from nine to one, where one is the worst, and nine is a better road. And so we, last week, we figured out probably about nineteen million to do streets one through three.
Okay. Again, this is a work session, so that's the point that I want to bring out. And if we are here to work through the budget, that's something that I desperately want to work through, because I feel like our three things as a city is to make people feel safe and to make people have a way to get to and from where they need to be. And that is police, fire, and infrastructure. If we cannot fund our infrastructure, that's the top thing that I want to look at, because I want better road conditions. And with the growth in Northwest Jackson, and with maybe two hundred new homes about to come on, those citizens deserve roads that they feel comfortable on, the same as East Jackson, West Jackson, all of them. They all need to be treated equally. So I will stop on that.
Could I jump back to pedestrian, pedestrian and bikes again? That's been encumbered by who? Is there a contract been signed? Who with?
Yes, we, some of that money is attached to an Allen Street Improvement Project that y'all approved, that will be providing sidewalks and crosswalk on Allen Street.
Because that deals with public safety.
It is, it is. It's where the young boy got hit by a car crossing from Allentown Heights. So there's a lot of cross traffic. Plus, it's an improvement that's, that is also needed and, from a standpoint of the Omen Arena Improvement that's going on, that the school system is also doing. So it's adding to that. That is encumbered. On the street, on the sidewalk projects, we also have design work going on on Chester Levy. That was one of the high priority roads that we had proposed sidewalk on. So we are, we've encumbered money toward the design work that's being, that's ongoing right now. So, so those are, those are two projects that, and, that are within that, that money that you're talking about, that have been encumbered.
But that, that doesn't include Parkway?
No, Parkway's the multimodal projects. So multimodal phase one and two are both for Parkway. And then the Airways project is a transportation's alternative program.
And the one other project is the, is, is using ARPA funds, is the Commerce Griffin Project that's, that's off of East Chester. And that, that property, I mean, that project has been awarded and will be coming to you soon.
And that ARPA money, is there any that could be diverted to roads that are not right now?
That's a big, it's, it's not department-specific. We have to get the spend plan, we're working through that. Get the, what's, what's been unallocated, what's already been allocated, we'll get that back to you.
So will that happen after the budget is approved, or?
I think our purchasing department's working through that spreadsheet now, what's been, what's been encumbered and allocated and what hasn't. And so we'll get more of that spreadsheet.
This may not be a question that, you know, you can answer, so if it's not, that's fine. But why would there not be money allocated for, for roads? That just seems like that that's something that it would be done.
Finally, we, for us working through this, on the finite timeline we had, was operations first and move to capital. And so that's why we laid out the options for the council of, you know, cutting expenses, debt issuance, rate increase. And those, those are the options that collectively as a body, that, that we often come up with on how we fund that. And so it's, you know, I, I think we, the purpose of the first reading wasn't just to hear it in passes. We had all the department heads here who's actually talked through it before any motions were made. And so it's, you know, I know historically, we've tried to go to work sessions before we have a budget hearing and budget reading. But prior to doing that, back in twenty twenty or twenty twenty-one, the first reading of the budget was the work session. And some of those lasted two days, because they just got to turn it the next day. And so, this, you know, I don't think it was premature to have a first hearing, because this is part of the work session that we normally have done in the past, to work through those issues and make those amendments and make those suggestions and corrections before the motion is passed or motion is given on the budget. And so we've just kind of done things a little different.
I think that was why we had a little confusion, if we could have met last week and go through some of these. So I think that shows that we desperately, in the future, need work sessions and work together to come up with some of these solutions.
What was the amount that we had budgeted for roads this year?
Start out with three and a half. A break even when we moved to the three million. But again, that's, again, this is all, nothing is, it's all written on computer, right? So we can make an amendment, and we can change it. And it's, you know, this is just what's presented, and we can work through how we make those decisions. As I mentioned Thursday, this is not a dictatorship of that. We present what we have at the moment, and then we work through that process.
I think it's important that we do include roads.
Well, I think we have to, or we're certainly doing. Like I said, it's my top three. I think if you polled our citizens, that's what they've asked for. Two months ago, we had a large crowd here that was just concerned about only a corner. And so if you poll most people, they want to feel safe, they want to be able to call nine one one, they want their garbage picked up, and they'd like to be able to drive their car and get to where they need to go.
Yeah, those are, those are the concerns that I hear.
But I think there are some great concerns, but I think as a, we're going to have to be willing to make the tough decision. And that's a possibility of raising taxes or borrowing money to do that. If we have to, I mean, make other cuts, but we're going to have to look at, how can we do it and find the money?
So my understanding is from the Budget Committee, and since you all, and you're on the Budget Committee, and I made notes yesterday when I called Mr. Arnold, that the three things that we were left to do would be to dip into our fund balance, to raise taxes, or to decrease spending in this budget.
Or what?
Okay.
Decrease spending.
Decrease spending, okay, I want to make sure.
Decrease spending in this budget.
Or, or go to, or issue debt to pay for.
Right. So borrow, dip into the fund, or raise taxes. And I'm not willing to look at any of those three until we've gone through all of this and we understand why there's large increases in one area. And I don't mean to be getting ahead, but again, if it's a work session, those are the questions that I have, that some areas are large, some areas are not. I'll just go ahead and say there's one person in this room that I feel like desperately needs a raise, and I don't know when the appropriate time is to bring that up. But those are the things that I want to work through.
You know, the, the point is, how much money do we need? And Jackson has not been stangy in this general fund. This, this year asking for a seven percent, last year it was a four percent. But if you look back the last five or ten years, there's been large increases. From two thousand twenty-two budgeted number to this budget number right here, twenty-two to here budget now, I'm going to comment on that. It's up thirty percent. That's ten percent a year. So that hadn't been just really, that, that we've been holding close to the purse strings. This year, we're, we're looking at seven point seven. I'm thinking what we need to do is pick five percent. Five percent is healthy growth, that's not negative, and say, okay, here's five percent, come back with a budget within that. I'd like your comments on that.
Well, you know, you and I talked about that, that, that I, I wish we bumped it up a little more.
Well, bump it up.
Well, I mentioned to you, you know, five point five.
All right, so I think the important thing is the questions that we have on the large increases, bring those departments up. Anyone from City Court here?
Mayor, if I could, before we, and I think that's a good idea, what you recommend.
Thank you all.
Let, let me, let me speak at a high level about benefits, because that's.
About what, Bobby's?
About employee benefits.
Okay.
So employee benefits, the cost related to employee benefits is driven, obviously, by what? Number of employees and their salaries, right? So as the numbers go up and the salaries go up, the employee benefits go up as well. Now, you know, employee, employee benefit decisions are kind of made and administered, if you will, at, at the mayor's level and, and kind of down. So, so I guess what I'm trying to describe is, the only control that a particular department may have over their benefit line is the number of people that they work, that they employ, and the salaries that are paid, right? So we kind of budget employee benefits at the top level of the city. Just for instance, I'll give you some numbers. FICA cost, you know, the city has to pay, max the employees' FICA cost, right? So that number for this next year, kind of based on current staffing levels, is somewhere around three point nine million dollars. The city funds with no employee contribution, the defined benefit plan for employees. That number is about eight point five million dollars. The health plan, kind of all encompassing, this, this, this next year is, this gets, this gets a little bit confusing, because the health plan, we budget the gross cost. So that number is somewhere between ten and a half and eleven million dollars. But then we collect premiums from employees, right, to get down to the net expense for the city. And the way that's structured now is the city's funding about eighty-one percent of that gross number, and employee contributions are funding about nineteen percent of that gross number. And I understanding, I understand that that eighty-twenty funding ratio has sort of been where the city has been for a number of years in terms of a target for, you know, premiums that we would get from employees. So the city fund eighty percent, employees fund twenty percent. That's pretty consistent with a lot of businesses and a lot of organizations. And this budget reflects that pretty, rather, rather closely, actually. I think everybody understands, we're actually self-funded for a health plan. We don't have an insurance policy, right? And we're self-funded for the health plan. So you never know what utilization and claims cost, that type of thing going to be. But the net between the gross cost of the health plan and the premiums that we expect to collect from employees, that's right at eight point seven million dollars. So when you think about our overall budget, and you kind of, I don't have, like, FICA insurance is not included, for instance, but, but somewhere north of twenty-one million dollars is benefit cost that's associated with our, with our employees. Now, when you go through and you look at this individual expense report, it can really, can be somewhat confusing. For, for, the, the reason being, what we do is we record all of this cost, we pay all the bills, that type of thing. And then we allocate the benefit expense back to the departments, all right? So we, we, we've tried to get better at that year over year. So this year, for instance, it makes sense, FICA cost and TCR, TCRS cost. So that's about nine, that's, you know, I don't know, that's twelve or thirteen million dollars or so. That cost is allocated back to the departments based on the salary numbers, because that's what drives, salaries drive your FICA expansion or TCR match. The health plan cost, that's allocated back to the departments based on numbers of benefit eligible employees that a particular department has. Now, that allocation methodology is not perfect, it's just an allocation methodology, right? But if you're in a, you know, like, if you're, have a department with a large number of employees, a small number of employees, or department salaries that are higher or lower than, say, the average or the median, your percent of benefits as a percent of salaries is going to be different than another department. So it's, it's, you know, we don't account for the health plan. We don't know how many claims were paid for the mayor's office. We, you know, it's not accounted for like that. Some departments, you know, might go all year, and their employees don't have any claims. Others may have large outlier claims. So I just want to point out, when you go through and look at these reports and you're looking at benefits, I hope the information I've provided you is, is helpful, because why one department's benefits is, you know, X percent, and another department is X percent of salaries, it's the allocation methodology. And how many, what their salaries are, and how many, how many employees they have in their department. So I just kind of wanted to get the benefit questions either way, so.
I have a question, please. Yesterday, when I was getting clarification from you, and I thank you for that.
Sure.
I don't want to get the pension plan confused, I don't want to get the health benefits, we're desperately. But can you speak and explain, I would call it like a 401K? Can you speak to how much money the city funds the employees and what other municipalities do, or what other companies, maybe even in Tennessee do?
Sure. So what the city does is, is very straightforward and very, very clear. The city has a defined benefit plan. That's kind of your traditional type of pension plan. And the city funds the cost of that one hundred percent. So there's no employee contributions toward the pension.
Is that normal for businesses?
Well, I would, I would say, I would say this way, it's, it's not the norm in the non-governmental environment, right? So that's, having a defined benefit plan, period, is kind of the exception in the non-governmental world, much less one that's funded entirely by.
Hundred percent.
By, by, by the city or the county or whoever. Now, in the, in the governmental world, and there are reasons for this. You know, having an attractive retirement benefit in a pension plan and investing in it that way is to recruit and retain employees. I mean, that's the reason you do that. So that would be my.
And, and I'm all for that.
Sure.
But the hundred percent, I just wonder if you know the figures, if, and I'm sure you do, a hundred percent of the employees versus fifty percent, if they, it was a matching, like other companies or corporations do. Can you give us a comparison of that number?
Well, it would, it would, it would depend on the specifics of your plan, right? What the match is, what the employer.
Right, well, let's just say it's fifty percent.
Participation levels. I mean, just to be honest with you, Councilman Wallace, I know we discussed this yesterday. You know, what I do know, the health system made changes related to the defined benefit plan back in twenty-ten. I think the county's done that. I think JEA has done that. So our, our cost right now, it's funding the TCRS fully, as I mentioned a while ago, is about eight and a half million dollars. So depending on the details of the plan.
That's what, thank you.
That's something that needs to be looked at. County changed that over, what was it, twenty years ago?
No, not twenty years ago. The hospital was the first one to do that, and that was in twenty, in twenty-ten, I think. So.
There were some real positive benefits, because if you take the same money and invested in a 401K or, or something like that, the long-term returns were tremendous. Did you?
Can be, there's risk involved in that, so, as well. So it's kind of like how the employer, whether it's the city or not, views their custodial responsibilities to their employees, you know. And this depends on the participation level, you know, not all employees can participate and can contribute and earn the match. So there's a lot to think about before you do that.
Could I jump back to healthcare? How much increase is it for the city projected this year, for the city's portion of it?
The TCRS is our health.
I'll jump back to healthcare.
You're going back to healthcare.
Yeah, the city's paying eighty-one percent.
Well, it's not as much, I think, we worked with Stacy Stone and the Risk Management Department about this, and we kind of forecasted a five percent trend line on the cost of claims paid next year that comes from having more employees, utilization, that type of thing. So a five percent growth next year, then there was some growth in, we have a reinsurance, insurance policy, there was some nominal growth in that as well. So, and, and the net number for the city, based on the premiums that we expect to collect, is, is eight point six-five million for next year. So I, I would, I would say, you know, somewhere less than five, that's some, that's growth somewhere less than five percent.
Next year's eight point six, and so you're thinking, what, four hundred thousand of that is growth? Did I hear it right?
Well, I'm saying that we, we forecast a growth line of, of five percent.
On eight million?
Well, no, mm-mm. It was a growth, the, the growth to begin with is, was, you know, was more like ten million plus, right? The eight million net is after employee contributions, so.
So there's additional question, is there additional eight million in this budget that was not in last year's budget?
No.
Is it four hundred thousand?
That, well, there, it's a number, you've computed four hundred thousand some sort of way.
I did five percent of eight million.
Well, it would actually be five percent of a larger number, a little bit, so it'd be a little bit more than that.
So, okay.
Yeah. But yes, I mean, when your health claims, the trend line, and this is true for last several years for the city, it's, you know, our utilization of the health plan has been increasing year over year, some, some years more than five percent.
I would, I would just speak a word of caution to the council of balancing the budget on the backs of our employees.
Yep.
These are the people that provide the service, these are the people that answer the nine-one-one calls, these are the people that go out and repair the streets, these are the people that go out and climb in stormwater holes, and work in our parks, and to balance the budget on their backs is something that I will not be in favor of.
I would like to say that I am definitely opposed to that. I would like to look at some of them that haven't had a good raise. I am certainly not opposed. I think it was a good question to ask, because the council is not aware of that, and I stand behind asking that question, but I certainly do not. I check on department heads, I check on employees, they are vital to us, and I think every council member should treat them with the utmost respect. And I will not be a part of that, and I just wanted to say that. But it is a viable and important question that we understand finance of this city.
Yeah, I appreciate you saying that, because my purpose in bringing this up, if y'all are going to go through the department level expenses, you know, benefits is going to take up a lot of your time in, in, in doing that, trying to understand why this, why that. So my contribution was an effort to let you understand at a very high level what the benefit cost is for the city, and explain to you how that's allocated to the departments. And it's going to vary, you know, with this, this department's benefits as a percent of salary are thirty percent, and this one's forty percent, or whatever the variances are. And it has to do with, there are, you know, a large number of employees, small number of employees, higher salaries, lower salaries. So there's no sense really taking your time up, line item by lot, benefit by benefit, bug of benefit for the departments, so that's what I was trying to explain, so.
If I could ask you a question, I think some of the things that came up that people had concerns about was the homeless shelter.
Right.
The million dollars for the police cars.
Yeah.
So I think we got cleared up that the homeless shelters basically locked in, at this point, based on, we've already signed the contract.
That's my opinion.
The million dollars for police cars, is that, is that in there?
Well, actually, just, just, just to be clear, the current ordinance that before, is before the council, it does not include a million dollars for police cars.
Okay.
It doesn't include three million dollars for street paving. All that is included are those items that are referred to three or four times a day already. If you look at the ordinance, whatever page that is, page nine, those are the only items that are funded in this budget ordinance. And they're only funded because we have funding sources for them, we have money for those. So now, there was money requested for additional police vehicles. There was money requested for street paving.
Yeah, I think, Chief, go ahead, you want to come on up? Chief Corley, we can talk about the questions for police and why, why police officers need vehicles? And so, in your expense report, Council, this is on page, let me get there. It start on page eleven of your expense report. But Chief, you want to talk about the increases, the thing, you know, there's a question, you know, twenty-four percent increase in police admin?
For salaries?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, absolutely. I don't know how this thing works. Yes, yes. Is it good? Yeah. All right, this might help.
Zoom in on the bottom, I think, plus. There you go.
All right, that might, a little better. All right, so just kind of give you a little history for our, our salaries for our officers. And you see, at this time in two thousand eighteen, a starting officer, when we hired him, was making thirty-five thousand, four hundred eighty-four dollars a year. And they topped out at fifty-four thousand, and that's after fifteen years of service. In twenty-one, we shrank the top-out level to ten years. And they started at forty-three, four seventy-two, and topped out in ten years at fifty-six, nine seventy-one. And in July of twenty-two, that's when the citywide, we went to the pay step plan, the state step plan that all city employees are under. And you see the, their rates there for both, uh, starting officers, right there at forty-four thousand. So when the next fiscal year came around, we got our one-step, and that put us at forty-six, five ninety-two for a beginning officer. In August of this past year, we came to the council and got a, with a, with amendment to try to get us where we should be among the neighboring cities. And we made some effort and headway there, where we started our officers at fifty thousand one hundred. And that, that's kind of where we're at right now. The proposed increases for a starting officer would be going to fifty-six thousand two oh one, and topping out after ten years at seventy-two, two fifty-nine. So I'm kind of put that in perspective, if I can. This is Nashville. They start their officers out at sixty-six thousand. And after forty weeks, they're at seventy thousand dollars after their initial training. They're already at more than our tenure officers are making right now. This is Germantown. Their probationary officers, while they're in training, are making fifty-one thousand, that's more than our officers are making now. And here, at their top-out level, they're at seventy-three, and that's just down the road. And I can go on and on, I've got other examples, but to, to have us in that, that area is really where we need to be from a salary perspective. This is Masson County, they had a, their first reading of their budget the other day, and this is what the sheriff is proposing. If you can see there, their starting officers are at fifty thousand, and they're proposed to go to fifty-two. And then they're going to top out after ten years at sixty-nine, which again is more than what our officers are making right now. And I can assure you, our call volume is much more than the county's. So that's why the request was made. This is the proposed change. This is, in blue is, is what our officers are making now. And in green is the, what the proposed is for each officer. And the number of officers in those particular year ranges, and how much that makes the impact.
What, how many are we down? How many vacancies do you have?
We're currently at one ninety-two sworn officers. We've got eight applicants that are in the process of getting their physicals and psychologicals and those types of things done for conditional offer of employment, hopefully to get them sworn in in July or August. So that would put us right at the two-hundred mark. I can tell you that we, between now and December, we've got four or five that are slated to retire, so.
But then we need how many more to be?
Um, that's something that we're also working on, we're having a staffing study done right now by MTS to make sure we're, we're, our number that we're going by is where we should be.
And my point being that we have issues in our city where we need more police officers.
Absolutely.
Speeding.
Absolutely.
And neighborhood safety.
Yes.
And part of the issue is, we don't have enough police officers.
That's, that's correct, part of the issue is that. I would, I would, I'd hire fifteen right now, but to tell you a number, the number we've been going by historically over the past several years is two hundred and twenty-one as a sworn authorized strength. So we're about twenty or so down right now.
Chief Corley, in past years, we have kind of put a place marker, you can say, for those. Are we doing that?
For the budgeted spots?
Correct.
Yes, and so what's in this budget, we've allocated to, for thirteen more of their vacancies, if you will, plus the number that we know we're going to lose through retirement this year is going to put us at trying to hire in this fiscal year coming up, around twenty or twenty-two officers.
And how many did we hire last year?
Right at twenty.
Is that realistic, knowing what we're dealing with?
Right, that's what we tried to come up with, is a realistic number to allocate vacancies for, because in the environment we're in with hiring, it's very difficult to get qualified applicants, and
We have four retiring?
Between now and December.
Okay.
Get more for that.
And, and a few more we know of in, in the latter part of the fiscal year.
So if we hire twenty, we lose four between now and December. How many did we retain out of that twenty that were hired?
Uh, the majority of, of those. Now, we lost a couple, and that's been happening too with the applicants that we have, and we'll hire, like the other day, we swore in eight, and, and we lost one within a week. Just didn't, didn't realize the magnitude of, of the, the work that we do. So that happens, and so I think we've lost a handful of
So are we going to be gaining ground?
Yes, we'll be gaining ground, it's just going to take us a while to get to the point where we really need to be. A goal for us is to be in the two oh five, the two-ten range in the, within the next year or so.
Chief Corley, there's been some questions, and Councilmember Dodd and I, myself, were the only ones that went through actively promoting and understanding the need for police officers to have a car.
Right.
Can you speak to that, and, can you speak to that and then also help the public and the council understand that that is a part of retirement?
It is, okay, so two, two factors involved, from my perspective, for requesting vehicles. One is the take-home car program and having, having enough vehicles for, for everyone beyond probation. The expectation is you get through the probation period, and then you'd be issued a vehicle. We still lack about twenty-five cars to get to that point. And so that's some of it, is to, is to, to recruit and to retain officers, that's part of the, the, the package, if you will. Another aspect of it, and, and just as important, is the maintenance that's involved in, in keeping a vehicle long-term. We went several years where previous councils did not approve purchasing vehicles. And so we were forced to, to limp along with vehicles that were eight, ten, twelve years old, two hundred and fifty thousand mile vehicles, and they got to the point where they were unsafe. We've got several, we're, we're having to decommission right now, because the maintenance cost alone, cost prohibitive to keep that vehicle, or they're just unsafe to drive. And so we have to replenish that. That's some of the goal of this over the past few fiscal years and going forward, is trying to get to the point where we're, we're backfilling, but for those missed years of not getting any vehicles, and, and we got old cars that we have to get rid of. And then trying to make that a, a, a retention and recruiting piece as well.
So is there a have-to number, where we have to replace this number of cars this year?
No, see, some of that is, is unpredictable. We don't know when a, a vehicle's going to be wrecked, and we don't know when the transmission's going to fall out of one. And those things are kind of hard to predict, but we do know that we've got cars that we look at from a maintenance cost perspective, mileage on the vehicles, wear and tear, how many times have we had to go replace some major part, component of the vehicle? And we say, that car probably is cost prohibitive to keep. And so we'll look through that, and we'll, we'll decommission several every year because of that.
So I just budget how many would this possible?
So the initial request was thirty, and that may be what's listed on the, on the capital sheet, but that number got reduced to fifteen. So the one point two million dollars that you're seeing on the capital is for fifteen completely equipped vehicles. Part of that cost is also, because we're trying to be good stewards and, and keep these cars longer, is that when we purchase those vehicles, they will have a hundred thousand mile extended warranty, part, is part of the, part of the cost of the purchase. So when things go wrong down the road, we can still maintain them. The, the cost of maintenance on a vehicle that is issued to an officer as opposed to being a fleet vehicle that is constantly being ridden on the street every other shift or every shift is, is huge. Most of the vehicles that are assigned to a officer or an investigator last in the fleet eight to ten years. The cost of a vehicle that is what we call hot-seated and is moved from shift to shift to shift, that vehicle is probably going to be over two hundred thousand miles within about four years.
Let me ask you this, the, I think you said the number of cars went down in your request from thirty to fifteen, all right? And that amount is about what?
One point two million.
All right, so that's what you've requested. But I want to make sure I got, what you're saying, Mr. Arnold, is that your only funding source is for seventy thousand dollars?
That's right. So, yeah, that, that, that's correct right now, and that, that comes from a, a purchase order that was recently issued, I don't know if it's for one or two vehicles.
Yes, I, I can't remember either, but it's from insurance recovery funds that, that the council approved, come back to JPD, and we asked that those get put into capital so we can replace a vehicle that was damaged or totaled or whatever, and that's what, that funding, so it's being carried over.
Okay, so help me with that, he's requesting one point five million, we only in the ordinance have seventy thousand, where does that extra money come from?
In my opinion, that's the question that the council needs to answer, but normally, a, a vehicle, a long, a long-lived asset like that would be financed.
Be what?
Financed through debt issue.
Along with the question, we can talk about the ten million of capital, if we want to reduce costs, fund balance, debt issuance, you know, those are the questions we have to answer.
Actually, Councilman Donnell, just to be clear, the, this, whatever the number is, the seventy thousand that you see, there, there are purchase orders, those vehicles are already ordered, they're on the way.
That's correct. And we just haven't got the invoice form yet, and so that, that money's being carried over.
Okay, and so the budget does not include the money that the chief is asking for, for these other cars?
No, sir, no.
Got you, thank you.
Is that even a safe thing to do? I was thinking, at, at some point, we have a, a critical concern about police cars.
Absolutely. Absolutely, and we're there.
Would you clarify, how many more cars you need so that every officer can go carry one home? Do they have twenty?
Beyond this fifteen would probably be another twenty or so.
I wanna clarify, in this budget, you're asking for fifteen?
Yes.
But you're telling us the money is not allocated?
At this point, no.
Among every other capital request that we made, not just the cars.
Okay. Can you speak to those other?
Absolutely, any of them that you would, if there's a question about any of them, but, um...
I would like for you just to speak to the ones that you asked for that you feel like are very important, that you feel like you're not going to obtain.
Okay, uh, the first one and foremost, again, the, the safety of our officers is, is paramount from my perspective. And the ballistic vests that are requested, uh, what we do every year, those vests, uh, from manufacturer and N I J standards, uh, they expire for like a better term as far as their ballistic, uh, uh, capacity in five years. And so our officers are on a rotation that so many of them get a vest every year when theirs expires and, and then we go. So we can pre-plan ahead of time for the next fiscal year which vests are going to expire and we need to purchase. And so those ballistic vests, it says thirty-five ballistic vests at forty-four thousand dollars, those are replacement vests that are expiring, that current officers are wearing. The twenty ballistic vests that are down there below are for new hires. The twenty that we're expecting to hire during this fiscal year, that's the best cost for them. So things like that are extremely important and, and, uh, can't be not funded if you're asking my opinion.
May I stop you right there?
Sure.
So that makes perfect sense to me to tell us how many vests are not gonna be able to be used. We have to fund that. Two, if you have new officers, you have to have those vests.
Absolutely.
So I just wanna make sure council is clear on that. I think that sounds, Chief Corley, very good planning, that if you're telling me that X amount of vests are going to expire, that we need to be planning for X amount of vests and to be able to pay for it.
Yes, ma'am.
I just, I just get concerned if we're looking at cutting the police department with the things that you're asking for, just for the safety of a growing city that's about to grow some more. And then we have, uh, elements of our city that are always a challenge and, um...
So I, I think Bobby mentioned this earlier. For the sake of the ordinance, we cut. Uh, because there wasn't time to get the information for any debt serps. And so that's, that's why it was, it was taken out of the ordinance piece. And if the council, if you all decide to do that as a debt service, then we can go through and figure out what that is. And then we can start the process of, of issuing the debt for that, if we wanted to do that. And so that's why we brought the options for funding of expenses, debt service, fund balance, rate increases, um, but for the sake of the ordinance, just on, like, just on paper, is what's taken out, knowing that this is still a working document throughout the year that we can amend and we can come back to.
Mayor, if I could, please, uh, if everyone would look at your, your budget ordinance, page six, the capital allocation fund for next year, the budget calls for an ending fund balance next year of six-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand, two-hundred-and-forty-two dollars. So there are that amount of available funds now. Uh, the council decided, um, I think, what, last year or two years ago or something, uh, to try to budget from a capital standpoint, uh, a, a million dollars. Because pretty much every year, I don't know, there's a roof, heating and cooling, there's something comes up, that emergency that has to be funded. So at this point, those emergency purchases, there, there are six-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand dollars available. Now, if you wanted to appropriate some of those for some of these items that you're talking about, you could elect to do that.
Thank you, Bobby. Uh, Mr. Chairman, Chief Corley, when you look at retaining officers and you're interviewing officers, wouldn't you think one of your very most important selling points is, hey, we've got a new vest for ya? You know, you're gonna have a vest on.
Right, I will tell you that there are some very small departments that, uh, they can't fund those types of things and officers have to purchase their own equipment. Uh, I, I think as, um, a top-tier agency, which we are, uh, that, that shouldn't ever be something that, that we require, uh, new police recruits to do, is purchase their own equipment.
And I appreciate it. If it's okay, would you please continue with the things that you feel like are very important?
Well, I will, and I, but I wanna make a, a, a broad statement. Um, I'm, I work real hard with our staff to, to tell them and make sure that we're on the same page, that this is not a Sears catalog wishlist, that, that what we are asking the, the council to approve and for the city to fund, um, is needed. And, uh, equipment and things that we need to provide the services that we provide. And so, uh, just as a broad statement, everything that, that's on my list is a important item. So I wanna make that statement. But, uh, certainly there's some things on here that, um, we obviously gotta, we, we, we need to address and have. You know, traffic issues are obviously a concern of, of a lot of, uh, of your constituents and, and the citizens. And so we placed traffic-crashing, um, technology in here to help us do a better job, uh, on preventing and investigating accidents. And we've got, um, there's some things in here that the federal government is requiring us to do, uh, such as, uh, double, um, authentication on our technology. And so those, and then that technology package upgrade, that's in there, uh, as well as some things for our forensic lab. And so there's, you know, those types of equipment, uh, are things that, uh, we need now. To say that, like, the, there's an item on, on the list there under the administrative part, that's use-of-force training suits. That's, that's a need, uh, we have. Is it something that, you know, we're gonna not provide a service without doing? No, that's for training our officers and our new recruits, um, in, in the proper use of force when it's needed and, uh, and those types of things. And so that's part of our training. Uh, and so, uh, we're big on training, and so that's why that's in there. That fourteen, whatever it is, uh, I can't even, I think it's six thousand nine hundred dollars. Uh, I mean, if, if that's something you wanna cut out of there, then that's, we can, we could live without that. But, uh, it's something that has to be replaced at some point, so. Is there a particular item you'd like me to discuss? Because do y'all have this sheet?
We have this sheet.
Okay.
You have, you also have...
Capital expenditure.
Yes.
Well, I've... I just get a little weary if we look at not providing things, especially the minimum things that, that you need, uh, that make people, number one, just feel like they're safe. And having a police presence. And of course, our neighborhoods would love to stop speeders and loud. Can you, can you guarantee we will do that?
We're gonna do it best we can. There are some things on here that are recurring, that, that are on the five-year plan, if you will, and a lot of those, like the portable radios, there's ten of those. Uh, there's, uh, I think, five tasers, there's, uh, several body cameras, those types of things. Uh, th- these are all technology pieces, and we, we put that in the budget, uh, a minimal number of those every year because we know, just like your phone and my, everything else, something's gonna go down sometime during the year. So we pre-plan, uh, for a small percentage of replacement items like portable radios and body cameras and things like that.
Before we move forward, what we are looking at in our proposed budget, the items accounted for that you just mentioned are not accounted for. Is that correct?
Correct. Yeah. We're just... That is, that is, that is correct. I, I, I know that's confusing, but let me, let me say again. There, in total, there were, there was eighteen million dollars worth of capital requests across the city. We have funded for the six-point-one million that's listed in the ordinance. The other eleven million, the items you're talking about, fall into that category.
And, and that's concerning? That's concerning, we got six-point-one dot million and we don't buy vests. Seemed like that would be one of the first things you would buy.
And we don't buy cars.
And you don't buy, yeah, this is, this is the allocation of funds more than not having funds.
Well, some, well, not really. I hear, I understand your question, however, mo- most of that six-point-million is already incumbent.
I understand, I understand it's incumbent.
And the rest of it's grants, so you couldn't use the grant money for T-Dot project to buy that.
Okay, how much of it would be grant money?
Uh, I think it's on page nine there.
The police, the grant money, all that's already accounted for.
Well, that's okay, 'cause it, the point is, we need to make that some priority, should be the vests and the cars.
It's on page nine, so. Grant money looks to be about, let's see, seven, seventy-three, seventy, and another hundred, so about eight-hundred-plus thousand.
Out of, out of six million?
Yeah, grant money.
You know, we're, we're talking about, obviously, something that's very important, but we're getting capital. And this whole thing to start with was on the, uh, budget, just the general fund budget. So that's, that's what I kind of would like to adjust, as I said earlier. I'd like to see us with five percent and Frank was, was countering with, with five-point-five. Uh, I'd like the thoughts of what do people think about that?
Well, the other concern is, you get down to the, the bare minimums of things that, that, like the police department needs.
But those are capital, they're not involving this.
But then we have to fund that.
The, the operating budget, the general fund, just these things are outside of that right now. They're capital. And, and they should be addressed.
Right.
But I don't want to make, we're, we're muddying the water a little bit. We're trying to talk about how we do in operating. In operating the last few years, we've been averaging well over five percent growth, you know? And that's pretty healthy growth. And that, I would like to see us maintain that, five or five-point-five percent as far as the operating, not capital.
Can I speak to, 'cause I know there is one...
Please.
I know there is one operating item that Chief, Chief Corley, that's, the question's been raised about, and I think I know the answer already. But in police administration, professional services, three-hundred-and-ninety-nine thousand and twenty-three. Right now, we've annualized at a hundred-and-seventy-five thousand, which I think is the problem. I think you've got a big payment, it's probably, probably due on the central records.
We just received the invoice last week, so it's getting paid right now.
And next, next year, you've got four-hundred-and-seventy thousand, so there is a, there is an increase in the contract, it sounds like. But that annualized number is, that's an example of one that you can't just straight annualize, and we need to adjust that, so.
Right, yes, uh, that's our records management system software, and the invoice comes every year in June. So it's, it's paid at the last part of every fiscal year, so that's why it's not, you don't see it there.
But I did, I think I did see somewhere though, there was a, a ten, like a ten percent...
Yeah, there was a ten, ten percent increase from the vendor, and then that happens.
Okay.
There's another professional services line, and I think it may be under, uh, major crimes or whatever, that saw an increase. But it, the, uh, flock camera systems that we use, uh, the technology we use in town, when we had the, the security surveys done at the parks, if you recall this past year, uh, part of that recommendation was to, to get cameras placed at the entrances to those parks. And, and, and we did that, and, and that cost, uh, fell to the police department, which is fine, but that, that's a five-year contract at two-hundred-thousand dollars a year for that system. And so that's why that increase is there.
Was that the camera that caught someone that the Memphis, the police department was looking for?
Yes, yes.
So I think that's really vital.
And, and we've already arrested one or two from the parks where they, uh, we got caught out there and the camera captured them. Uh, both the camera inside and the flock camera at the entrance captured them, and we made arrests on, on them because of the technology that's there.
Chief Corley, if you don't mind me asking for the benefit of the council members and try to move, move this thing forward, because we need to move forward. But, um, could you speak briefly to the proposal, um, to help recruit and retain, uh, employees? I know there were some educational incentive...
Right.
Funding included in salaries as well as, uh, uh, what, I'm not sure of the term you all use, if you serve on the SWAT team or you serve on whatever.
Right, yes. So, uh... Part of the, yeah, the recruiting and retention, uh, package that we, we did with the, uh, request for the salary increase included, uh, education, uh, incentive, if you will. But, uh, those that have associate bachelor or master's degree to receive a, an annual stipend for that because they're not, they're, they're not being recognized for that, um, education. And then, uh, uh, the stipends that we're referring to is collateral assignments. There, there's probably, uh, close to half of our department that do much more than just come in and be a patrol officer. They're on the reserve SWAT team, they're on the hostage negotiation team, they're a field training officer, they're, they're, um, on various types of collateral assignments. And some of them do two or three, four different assignments. And so we were trying to, uh, recognize that and, uh, reward them in some way or compensate them in some way. And so there's a, a stipend-type program, so for up to three collateral different assignments that you could receive a, uh, one-time stipend annually for doing those extra things.
Thank you.
I guess my question is, uh, where do we go from here? I mean, we wanted to have this session to make the right decisions, to vote for the budget or not vote for the budget.
Well, I...
So have we...
Well, we still have several department heads.
Yeah.
Would, uh, my question would be, Mr. Chairman, would we, um, recess at twelve for lunch and then return, um, at, say, one o'clock or one-thirty, whatever?
Yeah, we're doing a, do an hour lunch break. And so, yeah, we got seven minutes, so, um, any more questions for Chief Corley on any departmental spending that he has? Or, Chief Corley, anything you wanna touch on that's out of the ordinary?
Um, I don't know, there's a, there's an expense in capital that's a one-time type thing, uh, that we don't, that we don't typically, uh, put in the capital. And it's a, it's an engine overhaul for our helicopter, uh, those, it's a tremendous resource that we use, not only here, but in West Tennessee, we get called upon to do a lot of things. Um, but the, over so many hours, we can only, you know, engine can only have so many hours on it under FAA regulations, and so it has to be done. We have the mechanics that do all, so we're not gonna have to pay for any labor, but we do have to pay for the components, and so that's what the, that cost is for.
I had made a note about the helicopter. When do we, give me some circumstances when we use the helicopter?
Well, the, the helicopter patrols, uh, as a, as a weekly thing on the weekends. But we're, we're summoned quite often because a lot of the equipment that we get for the helicopter, uh, is part of, uh, EMA and District Ten and things like that. And so when we, we have mutual aid agreements with, uh, surrounding counties. There's no other helicopter in West Tennessee. Uh, THP, I believe, is about to get another one in this area. But, um, so we respond to a lot of calls for missing children, uh, suspects that have fled. And, uh, we, we do it, you know, they work with our department, obviously, but also in the county, but surrounding counties. Um, Alzheimer's patients that have walked off. And, and so, uh, as a, as a resource, the, the helicopter itself is a free thing. We get that from the federal government un- under a program, so the cost of the helicopter is just the maintenance of it and fuel, that's the things that we have to pay for.
Okay, so it's used?
Constantly.
All right, now, do these other counties you've mentioned, we use to help them out, do they contribute at all to the cost of repairs or anything?
Well, not to the cost of repairs, no, sir.
What do they contribute?
They're, they're part of the, the District Ten, and so any kind of grant funding, the whatever, they also are, are privy to, 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 to the benefit of that. Uh, but they don't, they don't pay to the cost of the maintenance of the helicopter.
Or provide funding for services as it's used?
No.
Well, thank you again.
Very much, very much.
Safety of, of our people and...
Very much.
Thank you, I appreciate y'all.
Thanks, Chief. All right, so before we go to lunch, we'll do, make sure we got everything here. We come back at one, the following... we come back at one, the following will be, we'll start with fire, then go to Central Dispatch, then Planning, Growth and Development, Public Works, Animal Care, Wrecking Parks, and Groundskeeping. We'll do it in that order when we get back. All right, we'll take a lunch.
Thank you.